Eric Alderetti.
Here.
Phil Becerra.
Here.
Bruce Bauer.
Here.
James Gartner. Mark McLaughlin.
Here.
Beatrice Mendoza.
Yes.
Lynette Varino.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum. Thank you. Will you all please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to this republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with equalty and justice for all.
This is a time for public comments for non-agendized items, so anything that is not on the calendar, if you are here to make any public comments, this is now the time to speak. Does a member of the public have any public comments on non-agenda items? Hey, seeing none, then we are going to move on to the consent calendar. Do we have a motion to approve items on the consent calendar?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner McLaughlin and a second from Commissioner Alderetti. All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Consent calendar passes. We'll move on to the business calendar. And we, it's, next item is Commissioner Communication Disclosures. Do any commissioners have anything they wish to disclose with regard to items on tonight's agenda? We're going, none? Okay, very good. Moving right along. Moving on to the public hearings. We have a public hearing number, well, this is a time and place for the public hearing on item number one. And that's for conditional use permit number 201629, conditional use permit 201630, and conditional use permit 201633. If you wish to address the planning commission, please file a request to speak form with the secretary. Comments are limited to three minutes unless an extension of time is granted by the chairperson. The action of the planning commission is final following consent of the city council unless, if allowed by the Senate and municipal code, an appeal to the city council is filed with the clerk of the council and a copy is sent to the planning commission within ten days from the day of the commission's action or unless set per public hearing by the city council. Staff will now make a presentation on this item.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman and planning commissioners. The item before you is the Majesty Restaurant, which is looking to obtain three CUPs tonight in conjunction with their restaurant operations. It's located at 501-5 West Edinger Avenue, Unit V, and they want to expand into Unit Brief description here, they're looking to expand their ABC license. They currently have a on-premise beer, wine, distilled spirits. They want to expand that adjacent space. In order to do that, they got to amend their ABC license to allow the additional alcohol sales into that adjacent tenant space. They also are looking to get approval to operate until 2:00 a.m. with their, for their restaurant, as well as allow the ancillary use of banquet within the restaurant as well. Here's a brief site description here. You can see the aerial, the shopping center. This is the Valley Shopping Center located on the corner of Euclid and Edinger. And actually, that building right there on the bottom piece of the property, see if I can get the cursor to go, there we go. This building here is actually in the city of Fountain Valley. So we got a property that kind of shares city limits. So, whoops. So the site in question here again is this, this shopping center and the tenant space is actually within this area right in here where the arrow is pointing at. Commercial zoning and general plan, use is consistent with both, and it's surrounded by commercial to the west and residential to the north, south, and to the east. Here's a photograph looking at the location there. And again, they want to expand toward those glass little dormers are right here on the left-hand side of the picture, they expand towards this area right over here. And here is a site plan, gives you a more detail of the location as well. Currently, the space is around 8,000 square feet. They want to add another 3,500 square feet to go into that adjacent tenant space. It'd be a total of 11,500 plus or minus. And here is a sample what the floor plan could be. So analyzing the project here, we take a look at different criteria. One is to meet all of the city's standards, and the answer to that is yes. It meets all of our standards, especially what pertains to the ABC license, which we have set standards in our code, and as well as the bank facility standards. The use, those multiple uses they're asking for provide additional amenities to the residents and visitors by giving them another option to have a place to have events such as weddings and wedding receptions. We have standards in place through these conditions of approval and the standards in the code that will ensure that this place remains an eating establishment and does not become something like a nightclub, for instance. We have conditions on the after-hours and the banquet CUPs, which will help mitigate potential effects. And then that last bullet point there, I have received in the last couple of days, three emails and a phone call regarding neighbors' concerns about the use. There's also a couple of neighbors I ran into today who have some comments, they'll share with them with their concerns with you as well about the potential use. With that, we're recommending that you approve the CUP 1629 for the expansion of the ABC license, and then 30 and 33, which is for the after-hours and as well as the bank facility. And those two are by conditions, by conditions. So that concludes my presentation. I can answer any questions that you may have on this item. Thank you.
Are there any questions of staff on this item? Commissioner McLaughlin?
I've got basically two. There's another establishment in there that's Sing Sing Karaoke. Do we know what the hours of that particular operation is?
I do not know those hours, but I, by code, the latest they can stay is till midnight. Any commercial use with 150 feet of residential has to get a CUP in order to open past midnight.
Okay.
So I can look into that for future reference.
And if I'm not mistaken, this was a restaurant before, correct?
Yes, Emerald, the Emerald Bay, I believe it was, the Emerald, yes. It's been a restaurant for 20-something years.
It had beer, wine, and?
That's correct. Beer, wine, distilled spirits.
And distilled spirits. And the hours of that particular restaurant?
That one would have been till midnight the latest as well, because they didn't have a CUP to operate past midnight.
Again, to 12:00.
Till 12:00 in the case.
Okay.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
Does Vince, the Sing Sing, does that have an entertainment permit, do you know?
Not that I'm aware of. And, and this one here does not have one either. They're in a process of applying for one right now.
Is that, on the other entity, the Sing Sing, that's not part of this?
It's not part of this, no. It's a totally separate issue. I can look into that and have code enforcement to move forward on anything if they're doing anything illegal operations. But no, it's not part of your action tonight.
So Vince, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
So the ABC, the CUP, is to expand the current ABC license into this pad that they've purchased. So it will now, the restaurant will now encompass a larger square footage with the purchase of the?
That's correct.
Unit V.
Unit, Z they're acquiring, yes.
So if, let's just say, for some reason, we didn't approve the ABC, that would mean they'd still be operating in the, in the adjacent units that currently have that?
In the current space, right.
Okay. And, and then, I see that there's 391 parking spaces, so I wanted to talk about the banquet facility.
Understood.
Because it says that the, they have the capacity to hold 400 seats, and if they were to be, so I guess my question is, that would be regardless of whether they had banquet CUP or not?
Yeah.
The 400 seats?
Parking is based upon the square footage, not so much the seats. We take the overall size of the, of the facility. It's one per hundred for a restaurant. So they would need 115 parking spaces.
115?
115, right.
That they, that?
That's allocated for the restaurant uses, yes.
But to have a wedding of 400 guests would realistically be, take a lot more than 118.
They could, but there's some, yes, that's possible, yes. But the assumption also is there may be two or three people or four family coming together, so maybe less parking than just one space per seat.
And, and the extended hours, if, if we were to approve extended hours, it would be for every day of the week? Once they receive extended hours through that CUP, they're allowed to operate seven days a week until 2:00 a.m.?
That's correct.
Thank you. Commissioner McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was curious, are there any entrances or exits through the rear of the restaurant? Not, not physical location, let me rephrase it. Are they utilizing any of the entrances or exits out the rear of the property, out towards the adjacent R1 properties?
Not that I'm aware of, but you can, we can ask that question of the applicant when they come in.
Okay. And then, just, just to clarify, so currently, right now, they're not operating past midnight for the entire restaurant? Because I know the ABC portion of the CUP is for the expansion, but as of today, as of this moment, are they opening, are they operating only till midnight, correct?
It's my understanding that they've been having some events past midnight right now. And you've, we've got one of the people who's speaking, one of the public, will, will kind of share that information. But I found out today that there are some events that are going till 1:00 a.m., which is in violation of the code.
In violation, okay, thank you.
Oh, Commissioner Alderetti?
Thank you. Just, just a couple of questions. The, the Majesty's been operating since March 6 of 2015, and at least that's what the report says. So in that time, do we have any idea of how many calls for service, if any, or complaints?
Yes, we do. I had the police department draw down a little bit deeper for us, because their analysis and their report says there's nothing going on. They've had 50 recorded items of activity within the last year. Of the 50, you have 12 burglary reports, one theft, one stolen vehicle, one warrant arrest, one information report, and five false alarms. So in their mind, police's mind, it's not a significant activity and nothing that directly ties into this location itself, this, this business, none of these calls.
So this is just a track?
This is, this, well, this is actually 501-5 Edinger.
Okay, got it.
But nothing that's specifically said the Majesty Restaurant itself.
Got it.
So they could have been anywhere in that center.
Okay.
And then you'll, you'll get some neighbors here that may share some additional information. I received a phone call today from Mrs. Melcher, Julie Melcher, some of you may know her, and she shared some, some noise issues and some traffic issues, and, which were kind of shared amongst all the business, not only that one, but also the market next door that apparently loads after-hours and their beeping goes off and interrupts the tranquility of the neighborhood, so.
Thank you.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
Vince, will you, have you investigated any non-conforming uses at the restaurant? It looks like one of the persons who's complaining here is complaining about music shows.
Yeah, that's the stuff that I found out about today, that they'll share with you as well. And that would be not unpermitted, illegal, they don't have an entertainment permit as of, as of right now. When, when the application presented to us, it was for banquets, for wedding banquets, was one of the big ones. We weren't aware of any shows that were going on, so.
Well, how would we handle that, though? I mean, if we're seeking, I mean, if they're utilizing that in a non-conforming manner currently, and they're seeking to expand, I mean, shouldn't we, we need to know, don't we, before we can rule or make some ruling here in terms of whether?
Need to know if they're having these events, or?
Yeah, if they're, they're.
Well, apparently they are. I've seen some flyers of some past events, so, again, I found out today that there were some activities about, seems to be about one or two a month that's been going on out there. So we'll get some more information from one of the residences here to kind of share that with us. And I have, I'm going to meet with them afterwards and get some additional information. So that's, I guess, part of your decision-making is, you know, the record of the, of the project site.
Okay.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
Okay. Question on the, on the market next door. What are the hours, what's the hours of that facility?
It would have to be midnight as well. In any commercial use, it was limited to midnight unless they get a CUP.
But they, but they're receiving trucks after midnight?
Sometime early in the mornings, although, that was informed to me. Didn't say what time, said they get the early morning, the backup beeping of the trucks back and then, so. It's from midnight to 7:00 a.m., no activity is supposed to be occurring in a commercial zone. So it could be 6:00 a.m., 6:30, could be 4:00. She didn't, I didn't get clarity on that, that issue.
Commissioner Mendoza?
That actually leads to the question I have. It says that the delivery of trucks are parking into residential areas. Has there been any complaints about that, and how much space is it taking?
Code enfor, well, they're not allowed to do that, number one, they load off-site. Code enforcement has been very active on this location, this site in general. I spoke with the code enforcement officer for this area this afternoon, and she said they've, they got several calls for the center in general, not so much, again, about the Majesty, but about some of the activities going on there, mainly the, the market. So they're on top of it, they've been investigating it, and they keep on going out there as they get the calls, so.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
So as far as code enforcement violations, or citations, have there been any on the subject property?
Not that I'm aware of. I didn't see anything in the file.
Just on the adjacent businesses?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, if there's no other questions of staff, we're going to go ahead and?
Thank you very much.
Public hearing, thank you. We'll go ahead and open up the public hearing, and I have a few cards, speaker cards, so if I call your name, would you please come up to the podium and, and give us your address, and you can repeat your name, and you have three minutes to speak. The first one is Tung Lee.
Hi, my name is Tung Lee. I live on Genoa Drive, right behind Misty Restaurant. And I came here, I'm sorry, I came here today to ask the commission not to approve the conditional use permit for the sales of alcohol and after-hour operation until 2:00 a.m. for the property on 501-5 West Edinger Avenue, Unit V. I'm very concerned that the approval of conditional use permit may result in the following. Misty Restaurant will become a nightclub and not a restaurant. I have passed fire here to show you that they have dance stage and dance floor. The noise that's coming from the restaurant, especially at night and the weekend, are very loud, and my family cannot sleep. And sometimes there's firework at night, and they have event during the day because of the, the space that they have, plus the mom restaurant, and there's another dancing studio in that plaza facing Euclid. The parking is, they're parking to the resident area, so it's making very lot of traffic Also, the late hour at night, if they're open until 2:00 a.m. in the morning with the alcohol, will be danger to our row, our neighborhood, and our tax, our police resource. On top of that, all of that happened that reduced our home value and our quality of life. I bring you today along a petition of signature of the neighborhood that against this proposal, I have two lists here of signature. In the past year and a half, since this business opened, I have made over 20 phone calls regarding the noise that they have, and every time the police come there, and I called back, again, they told me that they'd be closing at 12:00 o'clock, but technically, they're not, because I still call after midnight regarding the noise. So I don't know who's approving the noise zone in the restaurant, but you can hear right behind my backyard. And so please, I ask again the commission not to approve this conditional use permit. I also bringing you here all the flyer that in the past, this is just some of the flyer that they have concert in there. And you don't have to take my word for it, you can just go on Facebook and look under Majesty Restaurant, and you will see all the flyer, all of their event upcoming. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is, and I apologize if I get the name wrong, Trey Twi Tran.
So my name is Tracy Twi Tran. I operate a dance studio at 5127 West Edinger, Unit D, which is the same building with the Majesty since 1996. So 20 years. So I'm this, in the same place, at 20 years. I was the, one of the first tenant of this landlord when they bought this building after the auction. So that mean I am the neighbor of the, I am the first one before Majesty, Majesties. I'm here to oppose the approving of conditional use of permit to allow Majesty to sell alcoholic beverage to 2:00 a.m., because selling alcoholic beverage late at that time will make the shopping center dangerous because of fight, gain fights, vandalism, this happened before. At the same place, we, before they have the Emerald Bay, so, and then they took over the next door, which is the Unit Z. From beginning, they was like tie, they sell, they do tie and business. So and after about a couple of years, they out of business. Emerald Bay took over the small place, and they open until 2:00 a.m. for some years and up and down closing, and they selling alcohol until 2:00 a.m. So I'm, I'm sure they, they cannot doing that, but I know a lot of people, they already selling alcohol 2:00 a.m. for a long time ago, and they, as I know, they keep selling alcohol very late. Parking is another issue, because now they have two places. I was one of very, first one opened the business, and I very difficult to have the parking to show with the planning. And now if you, if the parking, they have two places, and they selling alcohol, and the parking at the market parking, so they going to, you know, I have no place for my studio, my student. All the, I'm sorry, sorry. All the alcoholic restaurants in the area, especially the ones in Fountain Valley, do not open past 12:00 a.m. Majesty is the next to Fountain Valley, just cross, we cross to My Square Park. Allowing Majesty to sell alcoholic beverage past 12:00 a.m. will destroy the tranquility of the neighborhood. There is a number of homeless people living, loitering in the center and a few hundred feet away in the park. Allowing Majesty to sell alcoholic beverages is like opening a Pandora box for them. Drug dealer related, I know it, because, you know, people tell me.
Your three minutes is up, can you just wrap up your?
Okay, all right. Because we will weather outside smoking after consumer alcohol beverage create noises, cursing and arguing these things have repeat elsewhere, so with a pop popular with jogger and walker at night, DUI will get deadly. Commissioner members, please do not approve this Majesty plan. Thank you very much. Thank you for listening, let me speak, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else in the public like to speak? Please come up and, and fill out your slip. If not, we are going to move on to Andy Quatch. I think you are representing the applicant?
Yes, ma'am. Hi, good evening, Ms. Chairman and Planning Commissioners. I would like to firstly thank you staff, Vincent, for working with me on this for about nine months, or close to a year now. Just to give you a little bit of history on this location and the reason why we are here. And I'll, before that, I would like to also thank the neighborhood for coming out, give me an idea of, of how they're feeling, but mostly, give me the opportunity to explain the situation. We bought the Majesty Restaurant closed about 15 months ago from a previous owner, which operated for over 20 years under the name of the Emerald Bay Restaurant. They opened so long ago that they did not have a CUP on file, as, back then, it was not, no CUP was required. They were operating under their existing ABC license, which allowed for on-sale beer and wine, and of course, distilled spirits. The, part of the, part of their, like, ABC license did allow for live entertainment. Now, when we bought over this location, back up a little bit, about four years ago, the previous owner annexed, they added on the tenant next door, expanding the restaurant. Now, when we bought this restaurant over, we discovered that we needed to do, to update our paperwork with the city in order to fully transfer the ABC license. As a previous owner, when he expanded, didn't pretty much notify anybody. And so we find ourselves here wanting to update our records and to continue operation. But I would like to address some of the concerns that was brought up here. With respect to the Sing Sing Karaoke that's opened up, that's purely a name, they are actually a retail electronics store. They do not do, have any live entertainment, any food services, they, they sell mostly electronics and DVDs there. As far as the hours of operation, we, ever since we took over, we've always, always taken notice to always close at midnight. People, at least, that's the last thing, mostly for wedding banquets and such, you know, people like to stay over a little bit, enjoying the dance floor. What are unique to that location, what we also did when we took over was we, we noise-proof all of the back doors, we, we installed new security features. To answer some, one of your question, Madam Chairman, is that if you approve the hours of extension, should it be, must it be seven days a week? And in my past experience, sitting on similar boards, is that you can actually limit to certain days in which the hours, the hours of operation can extend, like maybe Friday, Saturday, Sunday, or Thursday, or something like that. But as far as call for services and police, ever since we've, ever since we put in security measures, like having two security guards at all times, we've never seemed to have any call for services, at least from the, from the police department. There was, there were burglaries in the area, which we did call for service like once. I have not noticed any homeless in that, in that frontage. We did notice there was a few people loitering to the back sometimes, and we just asked them to leave. But mostly, they tend to be on the supermarket side behind the liquor store there. As far as some of the concerns about parking, our businesses, the banquet generally starts around 8:00 o'clock. By that time, most businesses in there already closed. The supermarket, I believe, closes at 9:30, which leave the, one of the restaurants out in the corner, which belongs to Fountain Valley. I'm su, I think they stayed open till 11:00. And I, and I'm not sure whether or not they have live entertainment or not. And so we're here to ask the planning commission to approve this CUP so that we can continue operation, fully transfer our ABC license. And we honestly did not have any idea that this hearing would be required when we bought the place a little bit over a year and a half ago, but we're here to fully comply and to bring our application up to date and to do whatever it is that we need to do. We agree to all the conditions of approval.
Your three minutes is up, so could you wrap it up? You have three minutes on your speaking.
Oh, okay, I wasn't aware. Well, I'm open to any questions, ma'am. If you, if you and the commissioners have anything to ask of us, we're here to answer all your questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions? Will you, will the applicant, is the applicant going to be speaking, or are you the only speaker on behalf of the applicant?
I am the speaker tonight, ma'am, yes.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
Do you have entertainment operating at your location?
I do. We do currently. It falls under the old ABC license, which allow for entertainment, sir. And after this hearing is concluded tonight, that would be one of the first things that we will apply for, is the entertainment license tomorrow. We already have the paperwork and all the floor plans ready to go. It, it, it's not like we've been going under the radar. This been, this place has been operating with full entertainment, distilled spirits, for over 20 years. And we're simply here asking the commission to allow us to update what is needed with the city records. But we, when we bought this? But we, when we bought this, everything was already in place, we, we, it would be impossible for us to turn it into like a nightclub or anything other than what it has been. It's a banquet style facility. You know, nightclub brings us trouble, a bunch of different things that, you know, that we're not set up for.
Commissioner, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is kind of a combination of a question either for the applicant or staff. I'm reading in the staff report that there was an existing conditional use permit on the existing restaurant, is that correct?
It was? Okay.
And, and the reason I'm asking is because again, I'm hearing from the applicant that there was no conditional use permit and that he feels that he's come in to update records. And I understand the ABC license allows certain things, but obviously, as you know, with ABC licenses, they're subject to local standards. And staff, as far as our entertainment permits, I know that's not something that's been around since the 90s, but as far as what we typically see with type 41s and type 47s today, around what year were those instituted or codified?
No.
Okay. So, so then, so at this point then, regardless of what has been going on there, they would need the CUP obviously, but at some point they would have to, from what the applicant described then, he would need an entertainment permit or license in order to continue that activity today.
That is correct. And when the application came in a couple of months ago, we made him aware of the requirement. So if they get approved, I'm, that's when we'll ask them for that entertainment application to be turned in.
Okay, so, so this is a situation where they have been operating out of compliance, but the applicant has been made aware of the situation, is coming in, coming before us to obtain the proper permits.
Correct.
Okay, I just, and the reason I'm saying this out loud is just because I just want to make it clear that it, from what I'm understanding here, there is a non-compliance issue, but the applicant is coming in to become compliant.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Aldrich?
No, I mean, one of the things that you mentioned in, in your presentation is that you've soundproofed the, the...
One of the back doors, sir.
Oh, so a door. I mean, did you soundproof the banquet or did you soundproof the back of the?
The structure of the building is pretty much a cement type closure. The back door is where the noise mostly travels from and we soundproof it to the extent where we foam the entire door. There is one additional door from the kitchen that we are planning to also foam up and, and reinforce as well. But the walls where somewhere is fully concreted and I haven't heard noise of it out of that wall.
Okay, sir. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
One of the things that doesn't come together here is when you said 2014 was when we did the entertainment. You said that you're, you took over 15 months ago.
Around that time, sir.
About 15 months ago. So I guess what I'm curious about is if there was a change in ownership 15 months ago, that was within the boundaries of the entertainment?
It, it absolutely was.
Okay, let me finish my question and then, or statement, if I could, please. So is it, why wouldn't they be, why wouldn't the new ownership be made aware of an entertainment requirement given the current use of the facility and the future use of the facility? Is there any reason why that might have not have occurred?
In the first place, we're not usually notified of change of ownerships except through the business license process. In the second place, we don't necessarily know that they are conducting entertainment activities unless, unless we have a complaint. And so that's how we typically find out about it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I mean, through the business license process, the applicant would come in and don't they normally go to the planning counter before they get sign off or before they're issued their business license?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so at that point then, there was no, I guess, no notification to the new ownership that, you know, as of 2014, we now have entertainment licenses that the applicant would need to secure?
We probably not notified them if they did not submit on their application if that was something they were doing.
Okay. My, my question, my next question is for the applicant, as far as the rear doors going out towards Lionheart, are those open during the operation of the business?
No, absolutely not. They are unlocked per the code to allow emergency exit, but as far as access from the back, no.
And, and are they currently installed with emergency panels, the O shoot panels?
They're door, they're installed with a little push, push panel, so...
That sounds an alarm?
That sounds an alarm, definitely. And that's, I think, and most doors in that, in that plaza are, are installed with, with those type of doors. And some of those may be faulty and which has some, about five different burglary calls in the past among various different businesses.
Well, I, I guess what I'm just trying to understand is just to make sure, cause you know, we have, we've had this discussion far in the past with some, certain businesses around like downtown where a rear door is open and should it be open? And so in this case, what I'm trying to understand is just to make sure that if it's just a door that's, you know, swings open for deliveries and whatnot, you know, during the day, then it wouldn't be armed with that panel. But it sounds like from what you're describing then, that door is normally shut during the operation of the business?
It's purely for emergency exits only.
So, so do deliveries come in the front door then?
Delivery, there's a side kitchen door. There's, there's a side kitchen door which we have two, two back doors, one that is directly in front of Lionheart and another one that feeds directly into the kitchen from the alley and deliveries normally typically goes in there.
So they go from the alley side then?
From the alley side and that door is only open for delivery only obviously because it's kitchen.
Okay, thank you.
I, I have a question of the staff. So what I'm, what I'm having a hard time understanding is that even though they assumed the CUP from the previous owner, there's still stipulations in that CUP that would have prevented them from having amplified music or having live entertainment at night. So I would think that if they assumed the CUP, that they're still in violation of the conditions of the original CUP by the activities that they're holding today. Is that true or would we need to review the original CUP?
We have to review the original CUP and see what conditions are in place. Back in 97, we had much different conditions of approval. So I couldn't tell you exactly what's in that document there, cause this one superseded, so we really focus on this, this one. And when they get the entertainment permit, that would supersede the previous CUP, we have conditions on noise, hours of operations, security guards, pretty, pretty comprehensive list of standards that are intended to make sure they're, they're good neighbors.
I just have a hard time believing that even in 97, cause I was on planning commission then, that we didn't have those specific specifics in the CUP. And so I'm having a hard time believing that if the applicants worked with city for the last nine months to a year, that they're not aware that the, these flyer parties that they're charging money to come for bands or, or singers and so forth is not in violation. That's, that's what's, that's what's getting me, that's where I'm, so I, I would really personally probably like to review the original CUP.
Sure.
Cause I don't want to, if they're violating that now, the chances are they're going to violate the new one.
Sure.
That's my...
And actually back then, 97, we required a separate CUP for indoor entertainment. If you're charging a cover charge, totally separate CUP. So, yeah. So they wouldn't need a CUP back then.
Right.
A separate one, which they don't have for that.
Thanks, Vince.
Commissioner Bauer.
Vince, so it appears they'd be in violation of almost anything, we could, a CUP or the entertainment permit, they're in violation.
That's correct.
And so what's the stance in terms of the planning department and if someone's in, I mean, we had this similar situation just recently, a banquet hall over on 17th where someone was in violation, non-conforming use and they came before us, don't we take the position, the planning department take the permission, I mean, the position that as long as they're non-conforming, they, they shouldn't, they're not permitted to seek?
Yeah, ideally what, what should have occurred is they should have stopped violating the code, come before you gotten their approvals and then move forward with whatever the disimprovals they give you. In this case, they just, apparently it was business as usual, they kept on doing their, their events without approval. That's a decision you need to make as part of the overall analysis there, the track record passed and in the future.
But you were not aware until today?
Until just recently, right. I was aware today of these special dance events and events where they're charging a cover charge for, that became aware today.
One of the things that might be helpful for you to consider is, and I, I know you're struggling with this entertainment issue, is we did notify all the businesses that were operating when the entertainment permit, when we adopted the entertainment permit. So any business that was operating at that time was notified that if they were going to be conducting entertainment uses on their property, they needed to get an entertainment permit. It wasn't like we just adopted it and then let it go, we did, we did do notification.
And that was in September 2013, it wasn't 2014, it was the end of 2013. And we gave businesses one year to come into compliance, so to the, September 2014.
That meant the older business?
The older business would have been notified.
Not this. I mean, I think the question at hand is, the question at hand is, how do we notify somebody in a transfer of ownership? How do we notify them of the basic stipulations of running an establishment like this from the standpoint of hours, entertainment and everything else? I mean, that's, it doesn't seem clear that that is, it doesn't seem it's clearly done and cleanly done from our, from our city's standpoint.
Yeah, as the planning manager stated earlier, is when they come in for CBO, they fill out a supplemental application that gives us additional information on the business, hours of operations, specific activities. If we see something, we'll flag and let them know that, hey, you've also got to get a CUP for expansion or entertainment, whatever it is. So that's when we try to, to go through them there. And maybe it didn't have it, maybe it did, maybe we missed it, I don't know.
It's just process, I'm just looking at the process.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner, sir.
Well, so the, the current applicant is before us, how long has the current applicant been in possession of this business?
March of 2015?
Okay. So, so the previous owner was operating the facility with entertainment galore, but without the CUP that you described, correct? The, the indoor, what was the one from 97?
Indoor, indoor entertainment, that's if they were charging a cover charge.
So, so I guess my, my question would be for notifying folks of the new, new, as in, as of 2014, the entertainment permits, what would have been the criteria that somehow would have got the previous owners notified of this entertainment?
We went through, well, Bernie worked on that very extensively, I believe we went through all of our business license records, notified everybody who was a restaurant use and said, hey, we adopted a new code. And Bernie correctly remembered, we adopted this new code.
So just restaurant uses?
Yes, it's res, and also the Galaxy Concert Theater, any type of use such as that as well.
So, so you had any of the logical galaxy, whatnot, but then also any of the restaurants that may or may not be having entertainment?
Yep.
And then, so, so what we have then is notification went out, then the new ownership comes in. Now, the previous ownership obviously has told the applicant that, hey, everything's operating fine, we're doing everything under the letter of the law, right? I'm not saying that's right or wrong, I'm just saying it sounds like that's what's happened. So here the applicant is before us today. We had a situation here before this commission, the, the business on Fifth Street where the restaurant, you had a new owner come in and we were concerned about previous operations, but we wrestled with the idea of whether we were going to basically saddle the new owner with the sins of the past. And so I think that's kind of what I'm hearing here and I think the good thing about this hearing is we're clarifying a lot of things. The applicant had mentioned that he didn't need a CUP to continue the operations, but we all know that in order to serve alcohol, you do need the CUP in addition to the ABC license. So this is kind of a win-win where everything's being clarified out in the open. So you've got an applicant that's seeking all the permits and everything necessary, just now we're filling in the blanks here as to what he needs in order to proceed forward. And I think our, as a commission, we just need to figure out if we are going to approve this, what conditions we need to attach in order to make sure that it's not a nuisance to the existing adjacent residents.
Commissioner Aldrich?
Yeah, I think that's somewhat fair sort of analysis, but I do think that the, the one part that that admits is this business has been in operation since March of 2015 and the onus is on the operator to figure out what it is they need to comply with so that if folks can decide either intentionally or unintentionally to look the other way, they shouldn't benefit from that. And I think we look at the applicant as they come to us and that's the deliberative process we go through, but I don't think we immediately just look at it and say, well, what's the conditions that we put on it? The conditions can be that there's no approval, that's not a condition, that's just, it's going to continue as it is. So I, I just wanted to make that point.
And that's why I said if we approve.
Yeah, we don't have to frame it as conditions, we can frame it as bring it back, do further sound study, whatever it's the will of the commission.
There's one other comes, I'm gonna check, close the public hearing. Did you wanna, did you wanna talk about? I'm still, I'm new at this, so you have to...
Unless there's any questions.
Yeah, unless there's any questions of the applicant's representative, you want to...
Or do you want to close?
The staff, you want to, want to close and then we can bring staff back up. So I'm gonna go ahead and officially close the public hearing and then bring it back to the commission for any questions or motion. Commissioner Bauer?
Madam Chair, just so for clarification, so there is no grandfather businesses when we institute as the entertainment permit requirement?
Is that correct? I mean, they were all?
Hard to get it.
They were all...
They were notified, yes.
We're here this evening, welcome Commissioner Mendoza, my name is Bernie Carvajal. I worked on the entertainment alcohol ordinance back in 2013 and there was a one-year sunset clause where all restaurants, whether it had an existing minor exception or CUP, were given one year to obtain an approved entertainment permit essentially. So all of those existing conditions of approval, minor exceptions that previously allowed for entertainment would be now superseded by this ordinance. So even though there was a clause or condition that permitted it, they would be asked to and come in and comply with the current ordinance.
Okay, that's perfect. Thank you, Bernie.
Commissioner Malofer? Just to follow on that, so if you had your list of everybody that was contacted, then the obvious answer would be Emerald Bay was contacted, not Majesty.
It would have been the operator in 2013, 14 that we contacted as part of that list.
So you would verify that, right?
We can.
Okay. I think that, I think it's a start, it's a small portion of it, but it's a start to figure out, you know, how do we, how do we close the loop on this?
And we made every effort and as Canada was mentioning to notify all plausible operators that may offer entertainment.
It's just that, you know, just trying to follow through the process.
Okay.
Any questions?
I just have one more question perhaps, just maybe beating a dog, dead dog, but it doesn't, the, the question whether that sunset, that grandfather, it doesn't turn on whether the business was notified, it's the city enacted a law, you have to apprise yourself of that law. It doesn't matter if you were given notice, notice is sort of a courtesy in that instance perhaps, but there's no requirement and that's not what this turns on, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I have one more question, so going back to the code violations, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, code enforcement actions on the site, there were no violations specified as far as the Majestic or the Emerald Bay would, whether it's the current business or the previous business. From what I remember you saying, it sounded like that most of the complaints were the market with the delivery trucks and the beeping noise and other items and there were other, I guess, crimes that were taking place in the area, but they weren't deliberately attributed to the restaurant, correct?
Right, that's right.
Cause I think that would be a different animal if we were saying that, okay, they were, you know, playing loud music, they're cited and then obviously they'd be made aware, hey, you have a CUP that doesn't allow you to do these things. And I get it, they should be aware of the rules, but at least from what I understand at this point, there was no mechanism for the current owner to know that they were limited in certain regards.
Do the CBO process, again, whatever the application said, then we respond to that. And again, back to your comment, most of the issues that you raised about the noise and say loud activities, those would not be during code enforcement hours, they would be long gone, it'd be the police department who would have to handle most of those calls.
So did, and you bring up a good point, so were there any complaints? Cause I mean, we, we just saw a petition from the community saying that there's issues with this place. Were there any calls for service in regards to noise to this particular restaurant?
Again, the 50 calls, none were attributed to this site specifically, so...
Cause I, I mean, I'm not, I'm not disputing the community, I guess I'm just trying to...
Right, I'm not either, just this information the police ran was...
No, no, I mean, just, just saying out loud is that, you know, if, if someone's loud near my house, I'm going to call the cops and I'm going to say, hey, you know, this address is being loud, please do something about it. I actually thought you would say, yes, there was going to be so many complaints because of this place, but you're saying that there was zero.
Right, 12 calls total in that whole center.
For the whole center.
Yeah, in, in a one-year period.
We just had one of the neighbors say that he's made two dozen phone calls to police.
And maybe under a different address, maybe the police are logged under a totally different address, there's several addresses in that shopping center, that could be likely as well. So, I asked the... So, I asked the police to drill down deep for me, and that's what they came up with for this 501-5 address, but again, there's a couple of different addresses as well, so they could easily have been tagged to a totally different address.
Well, if I may ask one more question then, so, when, as far as noise complaints for the center, because you bring up a good point, you know, maybe it's, they, they called the wrong address, you know, you say it's 501 when it's really 503, and it's a technicality, but were they registered towards after-hours noise other than just a beeping truck at a market? Because I, I guess that's what I want to get to, is like, if there were actual complaints registered about something in the center that's emitting noise at a, at a very late hour?
I'd have to have the police give me a bigger, and also zone here, give me more addresses, give, give more addresses and find out more details.
Okay, I mean, I, I take the word of the community, don't get me wrong, I'm not trying to question them, I just, to me, it would just help, I guess, kind of, for statistics purposes, you know, you have folks that say, I've called and complained, but it's always good to know that, in addition to those testifying, we've had 20 others who are not here that also felt the need to complain. Thank you very much.
To, to that point, Vince, I would be, I would like to, I would be concerned about that as well, because the applicant's representative said that the market closes at 9:30, their operations kick off about 8:00 PM, their, their evening operations start at 8:00 PM. So if the calls of noise are coming in at 10:30, 11:00, midnight, 1:00 AM, I, you could pretty much guarantee that they're for that particular operation.
Sure. And I would need some time to get the, the analysis you're looking for, because I don't see, the police is not in attendance tonight, so.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions, staff? Well, I would entertain a motion, or if you'd like to make any comments?
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we continue this matter, because there's unanswered questions. You've had people from the community that have taken their time to come out and tell us that they've seen issues, and we have a police report or study that, to me, is incomplete, and I think Commissioner Bussara brings up a good point, we want to know, we want to dial it into what property it is. And, and I would like to know that, because while I'm willing to give a business the benefit of the doubt, I also know that when you start a business, I think one of the first places I would look is the, the city's website to figure out what the requirements are before I make a, a significant investment in the business. But I want to try to reach a decision that is at least based on full information, and right now, I just, I don't think we have.
I'll second that motion, and ask the maker of the motion, would he be willing to add that we also ask for the previous CUP as the Madam Chair had talked about? Because I think that will help us understand kind of the path of where we're going. I think, at least to me, and I, I'd welcome with any of my colleagues would say, but the previous CUP, in addition to the statistic, the statistics that Commissioner Alderetti mentioned, I think would help this commission get to a fair conclusion.
Yes, I accept.
Okay, my second stands then.
Okay, so we have a, a motion from Commissioner Alderetti, and a second from Commissioner Bussara. We're going to continue for how many days?
I said two weeks, but staff, oh, four weeks.
Thirty days?
Okay, thirty days.
Are you okay with thirty?
Yeah.
For thirty days? And give staff enough time to have the police, full detailed police reports on the service calls, including dates and times, as well as a original CUP that the businesses currently were operating under.
Continue, please, continue. To October 10th, that would be a date certain, and would allow us to not be required to renotice.
Okay.
Sure, I accept that. Do you want me to remotion it, or restate the motion?
You can just amend it.
Okay, amended to, to October 10th.
Second.
Second. Okay, I've got a motion and a second. All is in favor for the...
Any discussion?
Oh, is there any discussion? I'm sorry.
I did have a comment. I, I just want to express my concern, whenever I have an applicant that comes before the commission, and they appear with what we term in the law, unclean hands. That means they come into the commission, they come before us, they're asking for permission for additional permission from the, the commission. I'm always very leery of an applicant that is not in compliance, at that, at the point in time that they come before us. And we see the good people of our city that come before us, I'm always impressed when neighbors come around with a petition, you know, they put themselves out, those are very real concerns. And so I'm concerned that, you know, you come before us later on, we're, we're not going to be able to move that far. So I just want to express as strongly as I can that, you know, you come in compliance with what's before you currently, I mean, you need to apprise yourself of what you're permitted to do. The city's not obligated to do that, we're not obligated to do that, you're obligated to do that on your own. And you're required to do that on your own, and you're required to do that on behalf of the people that live around you. So I want to express this in the strongest terms as I can, that if this comes before us, I'm inclined to deny it even then, but I think I'd have to see some real progress on your part, in order for me to be inclined to, to grant that sort of permission.
Commissioner Bussara.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd also, first of all, I'd like to thank those that came out from the community. I always appreciate when you come out to let us know what's going on with the applications that are before us. I'd also like to ask staff that, if you're going to bring it back in 30 days with a recommendation for approval, that we make sure that there are conditions reflective of the sensitive uses around the site. It wasn't really 100% clear to me, as I was asking certain questions this evening, as to if there are concerns about noise emitting from the site, what is being done to mitigate those effects? I just want to make sure that, if, again, big if, capital I, capital F, if there is a motion for approval from this commission, that we are able to approve it with conditions that protect the sensitive uses to the north and to the east.
No comments?
I just had one comment. I'm, I'm always very sensitive to, to issues at the neighborhood, especially one that's adjacent to a restaurant, to their concerns. And I'm not sure if the applicant was aware that there were concerns from the neighborhood, but now that you are aware, and there is a petition, I, I, you've got 30 days, I'd suggest that you don't have, you know, I can't tell you what to do, but I would definitely recommend that there, you reach out to the neighborhood, and, and, you know, have a discussion about what their concerns are, and if there's something that you guys can do as the operator to, to work with them, because you're going to be there, and the neighborhood's going to be there, and you guys all have to live together, so that's my, my recommendation. We're, we're going to go ahead and call for a motion.
Okay.
So I have a motion and a second, no more comments? All is in favor for the continuance?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Sir, we'll see you back in October 10th. Okay, we're going to move on to item number two. So the public hearing for conditional use permit number 2016-31, and can we, staff will now make a presentation on this item.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Up before you tonight is conditional use permit 2016-31 for Tierra Blanca Restaurant, located at 1502 East First Street. This is an application to upgrade an existing ABC license for a beer, wine, and distilled spirits. It's adding an existing restaurant. The application requires approval of the conditional use permit. This is an aerial view of the site. As you can see with the arrow, it's pointing at the restaurant location. It is located in a general commercial zone, and is surrounded by hotels and commercial This is a site photo of the main entrance, looking south on First Street, and as you can see, the parking is located towards the right. The restaurant is broken down into a ground floor level and a basement, I'll go over that. This is the ground floor location, floor plan, and as you can see in the yellow, we're highlighting the locations for alcohol storage. And this is the basement plan, as you can see again in the yellow, the location for the alcohol storage and display. The site meets all standards for the San Ana Municipal Code. The project will provide additional dining amenities to visitors and residents in the area, and the standards ensure that the facility will remain an eating establishment and not become an attractive nuisance. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit number 2016-31. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any further questions.
Any questions, staff?
I have, I have, um...
Yes.
I noticed in the picture that there is a stage in the basement.
Uh...
Is that correct?
I can go back to that, if you'd like.
Can we, can we talk about that?
Yeah. So this location has been, the current ownership has been, let's see, since 2009, and throughout the years, the owner has gone through the proper permits to establish the type of use that she wants out there. It's a restaurant offering entertainment uses, and it currently has a category four entertainment permit approved. The basement is actually something that was approved during tenant improvements to provide that entertainment use. So the stage does allow for performances which are not subleased to any other type of business, it's for the sole purpose of the restaurant to provide that amenity.
So currently their cat four entertainment permit that they have allows them, do you know what kind of entertainment?
Yes. So it's live entertainment. The category four allows for amplified music, dancing, as you can see on the center, it's a dance floor, and after-hours operations if they choose to. So the stage is more for the live performances, to have a designated area or space.
But they haven't utilized it now, or recently, because they were using it for storage, so...
Yes, so the, the tenant improvements that were approved through the city and finalized through the inspection process was to convert an existing basement space used for storage to allow occupancy for commercial use. So think of it, before it's just a basement location to store dry goods, and now as part of the building, fire department, everyone's code, that space can now be utilized for restaurant use.
And it's, and, and, so as it stands right now, it's met all the fire codes?
Yes, so everything's been approved, the fire department, building department, planning, everyone has gone through and approved the supplemental of the tenant improvements for this.
And the plan, and if they apply for an entertainment license, that would then supersede the cat four they have?
So they, they currently have approval for a category four entertainment permit?
Oh, they already have it.
Yes, yes. The, the basement was in, to use it as that.
I got it, okay, that was where I was a little puzzled, okay, got it, got it. Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Bussara?
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. So do they have a banquet CUP at this point?
No, they do not.
So they're not able to have private events at this point?
No, they do not. They have, not for sublease, so like any other restaurant, they can use a, a small portion of the, the restaurant space for private events. They would be the operators, just like if you would go to a, what's a neighborhood restaurant, Abilas, where they have a certain portion of the restaurant for a birthday party, and they just reserved it for that. But they are the operators of that.
Well, no, no, what I'm, to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, banquet use is, I'm closing down my restaurant, I'm letting person X, company Y, utilize my space exclusively, closing the doors to the public, but operating under the permitted use.
The entire location would have to be part of the banquet use.
Correct.
In this case, it is not open to that. It's only allowing, like any other restaurant, a portion of the restaurant to be used for a private event, not...
So they're not, they're not trying to do the whole facility?
No, no, no.
Okay, thank you.
So I've, they're already utilizing then both space, the, the basement and the restaurant space for operations?
Yes.
Now? So this is just to expand their ABC to a full?
Yes.
Nice, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary, have we received any written communications? Thank you. The public hearing is now open for this item. If anyone from the public would like to speak, fill out a comment card with our secretary and come up to the podium. Seeing no one from the public would like to speak, would the applicant like to speak? Is the applicant present?
My name is, mi nombre es Maria Diaz. Pues la dirección ya la vieron, y pues nada más vengo ante ustedes a pedirles que se me pueden aprobar la aplicación para, pues para lo de licor, porque sí pienso que es muy importante, porque la gente a veces me pide, entonces yo no puedo, es como para algo, para darle a la gente más, un mejor servicio. Entonces, es lo que me gustaría que me lo aprobaran, y ojalá que me lo pudieran hacer, porque yo he cumplido con todos los requisitos. Todo lo que me dicen tiene que hacer esto, lo otro, lo otro, yo lo, yo lo he cumplido con todos los requisitos hastahorita.
So she's here tonight before you to petition for this. As she mentioned, that this is something that her clients ask for sometimes, that added amenity, and she's followed all the directions since, all the directions to get anything that she wanted to, out of this location since the beginning, so she's followed all code regulations and, and permit processes, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back. A motion, comments, Commissioner comments? Anyone? Commissioner Val?
I'd just like to thank the applicant, if you could translate, thank the applicant for seeking and obtaining an entertainment permit, which she did in this instance, which is exactly the sort of thing that we like to see, as a condition of seeking, the permission she seek to have.
Can you just go ahead and ask for the...
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution approving conditional use permit number 2016-31.
Wait, before you, have we closed the public hearing?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I'll, I'll second it, actually.
Second that?
Oh, good, Phil.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Do I have any comments, Commissioner comments? Commissioner Bussara? You good? Okay. All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Congratulations. Makes it nice and easy when they're compliant, when they come to us. Okay, we're moving on to number three. It's public hearing for conditional use permit number 2016-32.
Before she begins, I'd like to introduce to you Natalie Vasquez. She's been working with us for about two years?
Yes.
And she predominantly does GIS, but this is her first time before you making a presentation, and I'd like to welcome her tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for the introduction. Okay, good evening, Madam Chair and members of the commission. Before you tonight is an application for conditional use permit 2016-32 for El Cortijo Grill, and this is at 413 West 17th Street, Unit 107. So the conditional use permit would allow the sale of beer, wine, and distilled spirits for on-premise consumption at a restaurant currently undergoing tenant improvements, and the application does require approval of a conditional use permit. Here is an aerial view of the property. As you can see, it's in the community commercial zoning designation, and it is surrounded by commercial and residential uses. And here is a site photo of the property taken from 17th Street. Here is a site plan of the entire property, and as you can see, Unit 107 is highlighted in yellow. And here is a floor plan of Unit 107 with the proposed alcohol storage also highlighted in yellow, and it is approximately 36 square feet. The site currently, the site meets all standards of the San Ana Municipal Code. The project will provide additional dining amenity to residents and visitors. The standards ensure that the facility will remain an eating establishment and will not become an, excuse me, and will not become an attractive nuisance. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit number 2016-32. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit number 2016-32. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Bowden?
Is the applicant here?
No, doesn't look like they've stopped by.
Is the applicant the owner of the restaurant or the owner of that building? Do you know?
The applicant, I had two, I mainly dealt with two people, it was Blanca and Peter, I can't pronounce his name, it was Peter Yun.
Mundar?
Mundar, yes.
The reason I'm asking is, I know that center particularly, and there's been a problem, longstanding problem with a marijuana dispensary that's been operating there illicitly over a number of years. And I'm just wondering if this individual is not one of, that's why, to my question why, if they're one of the owners of that center, I'd be particularly interested, because they're permitting non-conforming use elsewhere in that center. So is there any way to find that, find that out, that question?
Code enforcement is currently investigating that, and there are two on-site, from what I was told, but it is under litigation at the moment.
The dispensary?
Yes. The dispensary.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
There's also, I've been told, this just recently, that there's also potentially a gambling facility within that same facility. So it's, this was from a neighbor that's down the street from there. Because the, on one side, it's Jefferson, and on the other side, it's Ross. And the people on Ross Street have noted that there's, there's always been a continuous issue with the fact of the pot shop being there, and it's one of the original pot shops that just hasn't been removed at this point in time. But there's also, in some respect, a potential of a gambling operation going on also. This is just, I'm taking the word of a neighbor and saying, you know, I would bring it forward. But, you know, I think as I read this particular document, this looked to be a chain, a restaurateur that wanted to make it into a chain of restaurants. This was their original restaurant. So, you know, whether that ties to the property or not, I'm not sure, but since we're going to investigate that, that's great. But it looked as though they were going to open up additional restaurants, according to the report that was put together.
Commissioner Mendoza?
I have a question about the location. Was this the facility in the People's Hall?
No. Not that location.
This used to be the, the Takeria, the Takeria that's on the corner.
It's just called Takeria, it's on the corner of Jefferson. About six or seven years, maybe longer. It's been there a while, but it wasn't, but it wasn't, they did not have, I don't believe they had a beer or wine license, they just had, it was just a Takeria.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Bussar?
First, I want to congratulate you on doing your first presentation to us.
Under fire.
Yeah, you know, despite the firing squad in front of you. Well, first of all, I'm glad we're not legalizing a gambling operation here. We've only got a restaurant coming before us, so, you know. My question's really boring compared to theirs. Which entrance is the primary entrance? And the reason why I'm asking that is because the color image in the staff report shows from Seventeenth Street that, I'm assuming the previous location had some sort of blinds or something that prevented view into the restaurant. I would ask PD to confirm it, but they're not here this evening. But typically, PD likes to have it transparent so that you can see into the restaurant. Right, and so I guess my concern is, if that's going to be a primary entrance, as opposed to just an emergency exit where people spill out onto. But I was looking at the floor plan, and it wasn't really clear as to which side was more favored. The restrooms, it shows on the site plan, are located more towards the parking in the rear, but I just wanted to get clarification as to, are both doors going to be, I guess, used equally? Or are they trying to gear one to be more primarily an exit?
I believe that the paper that's in the picture.
I know the site's currently going through tenant improvements.
And so they've put up, they've put up like papers on those windows. Are you talking about the illustration in the staff report? They put up papers. Sometimes they'll do that when they're doing construction, so you can't look in. But it's our anticipation that that will be the primary front entrance, and you'll be able to see into the restaurant from the street.
I mean, I know there's code that prohibits that. I just want to make sure that's something that we consider, that, that you're just not blocking off and putting the rear to the street. I mean, it's just, it's always good to have the eyes on the streets. That was my concern, thank you.
But I think, I think this particular facility, if I remember, the only entrance was through the back of the facility. There was no side or front entrance to it, it's just the back.
There's a photo inside the staff report that shows a door.
Shows a door in the front, is that what you're talking about?
And then looking at the site plan.
They didn't use that one in the Takeria, but I don't know if the intent is.
It might have been an emergency exit, but they never used it as an entrance.
Natalie, do you, the applicant's not here to answer my question, but there's only twenty seats. It's a really small place. Do you know why he needs a full ABC license? I mean, why he didn't come for beer and wine? I mean, typically, you're just, you're going to come in and, you know, a twenty-seater, you're just going to kind of have dinner and grab a glass of wine or a beer with your meal, and then, you know, hopefully get going, but do?
I mean, I feel like they're a locally owned restaurant, and they.
They just want the full-blown.
They want to provide that experience to its patrons.
Commissioner Bowden?
Are we within our right to request the owner of the underlying property? I mean, I know that the tenant is, well, I don't know yet here if this is a tenant or the owner. I mean, we need to drill down, as far as I'm concerned, on this one, especially in light of the operations of that center. I know it's been a problem, an ongoing problem, and I'd certainly want the attention if we can bring the owner of it before us.
Is that within our purview?
Well, I don't know. I mean, certainly if this is, the owner of the property, the underlying shopping center, is the applicant, there it's within our purview. And that's what I need to know. We need to know.
Oh, this, he's applying for a specific space. I mean, it, he, the application before us isn't a code enforcement violation. It's whether he wants to open a legitimate restaurant with a conditional use permit for alcohol. I mean, I definitely echo your concerns about some sort of illegal operations, whether it's the gambling, the pot shops, but at the end of the day, I don't think we could do that to the owner of the entire site if he's applying for a legitimate use in one space.
Well, there is an issue, and then maybe Commissioner Alderetti will speak to it a little better. I think with the liquor license, it's running with the land. So there's value that you're giving to the space, and you're giving to the underlying landlord, you know, in a way that you're not maybe with something else.
If there's any more questions of Natalie, can we go ahead, can we go ahead and do the public hearing? Yeah, open the public hearing.
Maybe this is a question, or Mark, Commissioner McGalafin might know. Is this the one that's near the videos guy?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm very familiar with that.
It's right on the corner.
Yeah, there's the gaming place and then the two, the two dispensaries.
So this is the corner spot where it says.
And then the guys hanging out front.
And the Peking Kitchen, Peking Kitchen is right next to one. I think what's.
I thought it was a block down, okay.
What's being stated is the next, the next unit over from the Peking Kitchen was, has been a number of different things, and now it might be, according to the report I got, a gambling place, but, you know.
Excuse me, I would really like for you to be careful, I mean, I would like to take the address of the place in which you believe that there is some sort of gaming institution there, if that is the case. But you really do, we don't have any verification one way or the other on that, and we really do need to focus our discussion and information on those things that we do know. We do know that there is a code enforcement issue on that property relative to some other uses there, but we probably, we really do need to focus on the issue that is at hand.
And let me comment to you.
And I will take, I'll talk to you later about the address on that, because I do need to refer it.
Yeah, and let me just comment to say, I agree with you 100%. It's just that this particular center, frankly, from a neighborhood association perspective, has been a thorn in everybody's side. It has been a thorn for not just this particular situation, but for many years. It's, it's been a problem, okay? And I'll leave it at that. But the other side of the equation is, is that I did talk with our neighborhood association president, and this was reviewed by the board, and the board did not have any particular issues at all with the aspect of this facility being converted into a restaurant that had, you know, a full alcohol license. So, you know, I mean, there's, it's not something that the neighborhood is against, it's just that the neighborhood is against the activities in that entire mall.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you've been hazyed.
We're going to break you in real quick, Natalie. And we're going to go ahead and open up the public hearing, and I see that there's no one from the audience to speak, so I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back for Commissioner comments and ask for a motion.
Well, I would like, Commissioner, Madam Chair, I'm sorry. I'd like to make a motion to continue this for purposes of, first, I want to bring the applicant before the commission so that we can pose some questions to the applicant. And secondly, I'd like the department to conduct some sort of research to determine who the applicant really is. I mean, is the owner, is the applicant the owner of that center? And then if that is in fact the case, then we do have some power to reach on these other issues. I think it's well within our right, and incumbent on us in fact, to make some, base our decision based on their operation of the center. So I'd like that piece of information, so we need that before we can make any ruling here, as far as I'm concerned.
I will, I will second that, and I'll just give a brief comment. I forget who brought this up, but it's a, I think, I don't know who brought it up, but it was a twenty, it's a twenty-person facility. They're asking for a full liquor license, that makes me scratch my head. And on that basis, I'd like to understand why. I can probably guess, it's more valuable, and if you're going to ask, ask, ask big. But on that basis, I'm going to second the motion.
Do you have any comments, or we have a motion second, Commissioner Bowden? I mean, Bussar?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, what's up?
Could we continue that to a date certain, to the October 10th date?
October 10th?
October 10th as well, that's fine, as far as I'm aware.
Or September 26th, either one.
I would just rather it's sooner, I would rather not put them out. Assuming, I'm not assuming that's the way it's going to go, so.
We can do it on the 26th, because the information, we're not going, having to compile information per se.
Commissioner Bowden?
I'd so amend my motion.
To the 26th?
Yes.
Okay, with a second from Commissioner Alderetti. Commissioner Bussar?
I just want to reiterate, I just want to caution us as to, I get where if we have a property owner, and I think Commissioner Alderetti said that we'd be granting them certain rights, or maybe it was Commissioner Bowden that said that. At the end of the day, the ultimate goal for the center would be to bring in legitimate uses and to condition them appropriately so that the center can turn the corner and not be delinquent as far as pot shops, gambling, operations, et cetera. So if, to me, as long as we know that there are, there is an application before us for legitimate use in the center, I mean, I welcome the idea of actually seeing who the applicant is and asking the questions, but I just want to caution us not to get into the territory of trying to condition other aspects. I mean, we got our hands, I wouldn't say slapped, but let's just say pulled back strongly in regards to another application came before us when we started talking about facilities off the applied site. So I just want to remind everybody that we should probably be a little more cautious when we go into it. I appreciate the efforts of my colleagues to want to rein in any of these illegal uses, but I think we just, you know, want to encourage folks to actually bring in legitimate uses as opposed to making it more difficult. But with that, I'll support the motion.
Any other comments?
I want to talk about the parking lot. The parking lot is atrocious. It's, it's got potholes, it's, it's in such horrible condition, I won't even go to Peking Kitchen, because you're, you're, it's just a remedy for, for damage to your car or blowing out your tires or something. Is there anything we can leverage from the parking standpoint with the CUP? Whether, you know, whether it, because this guy that owns this property has complete, the owner of the whole entire, has total disregard for compliance, whatever it is, it just, complete disregard. If we have any leverage from somebody that's going to be paying him rent, he has, you know, paying him rent, if we can, I don't like the word stronghold, but the CUP would force that parking lot who's, because at the end of the day, people that are going to come to the restaurant want to come and be able to, I mean, I would frequent a Peruvian restaurant, I mean, we don't have anything close by, but not with the conditions of the parking lot the way they are. And that had, I don't know if we need to make that point to the, to the new owner, or how we, but I would love to see parking, that parking lot be, come to code.
If the, if the parking lot, we can send an inspector out there, and if it does not meet our current standards for parking facilities in terms of pavement, any kind of substandard conditions, we can have it. We can address that in the CUP.
In the CUP?
Yes.
We can condition it.
Even if it's a separate owner?
We conditioned the, we had a cell tower that came before us, where one of the conditions in the approval was to resurface and restrike the parking lot. I don't see why that wouldn't be applicable here.
I guess I just have one, if the applicant isn't the owner, then we're going to really be, I think the owner, I think the owner's going to stay up there, that's great, enjoy serving coke.
Well, I, does it really?
That's going to be, that's, that's really the test, I mean, because that tenant's going to go, oh, Sam, I'm out.
Well, that's, I mean, it's, regardless of who the owner is, you are required to have parking, permissible parking. And if it's not per code, it's not permissible parking, isn't that right? Period.
Right, if you, if you're not meeting our standards, it's not really, it's almost not a planning, I mean, it's almost not a conditional use permit issue, it's a, that the building is substandard, or the parking is substandard. So if they don't meet it, they don't meet it.
So therefore, I mean, if I hear what you're saying, I mean, it really can't be tied to the conditional use permit if the owner is not the owner of the property. It can be something that can be handled through code enforcement?
This is, yes, this is a code enforcement type situation.
The conditional use permit runs with the land. So, and the land is what we want to see paved and free of potholes, so you can tie them. I just, I mean, but the thing is that what's being brought up here is that they don't need a conditional use permit to be required to provide standardized parking, not off-terrain nonsense that they have now.
Yeah, but, you know, but if it's conditioned, and the owner doesn't want to do it, the tenant who wants the CUP could pay for it too.
Well, the tenant, I think, at that point, any reasonable tenant's going to go, well, if I have to do that, that's ridiculous. Hey, property owner, you should do it.
We don't know that.
No, no, I'm just saying.
Put it out there.
Yeah, but no, but I mean, I think at some point, it's got to be done, no matter who pays for it, somebody's got to do it. Madam Chair, I think you brought up a legitimate point, that this should be something that we really shouldn't have to worry about from a conditional use standpoint, but the fact is, you've witnessed that the conditions out there are deplorable, and so we need to act in some way, shape, or form however we can as a body.
As a body, within our, within our jurisdiction, within our.
Okay, we can send code out right there now to see if it complies with our, you know, with our standards. And if it doesn't, the owner will be noticed. As part of this use permit, we have, or conditional use permit, we have in the past required tenants or the person that's the use person. You'll remember, we had some issues with tenant improvements up on that 711, up on, where was it? In the north part of the city, in Your Member Lane. And we had to continue it because there were negotiations between the tenant and the owner. Well, in this case, too, the owner and the tenant may be, would typically be asked to split the cost. I mean, that, you know. But in this instance, we will be sending code out there, they'll be looking at it, and the, and the property owner will be asked to make those changes to the property, so.
If we made, if we made a condition that required something within the tenant's space, you know, something structural, something along those lines, we would expect that it be taken care of. We as a body wouldn't sit here and go, hey, can we see your. We as a body wouldn't sit here and go, "Hey, can we see your, um, your business plan, who's gonna account for what?" We would just say, "We believe that it's in the best interest of the community that certain improvements be made." It sounds like what's being expressed here is the, um, it would be in the best interest of the community not to have an off-road experience to park your car in that shopping center. So, I, I mean, to me, it seems like a very fair request of whether it's the applicant, whether it's the property owner, that that site have fair parking.
Well, and-
It's, it might be our only opportunity.
Right. I think it's absolutely appropriate for us to do that. That's in the only way sometimes, in this instance, that we will have a say over the landlord. I mean, that means maybe the landlord doesn't get this business, this, this business will locate somewhere else, but that's exactly the sort of pressure we should be applying. They don't have conforming parking, they don't, they shouldn't be permitted to seek a CUP. Isn't that correct?
Well, they have to conform to the parking lot whether they have, it's a CUP use or not. I guess that's the, that's the bottom line, whatever go, you know, they don't have a parking lot that meets the standards of our code right now, they don't have a parking lot that meets the standards of our code. So, um, just as if their building didn't meet the standards of their code, it, it doesn't work. So, there's gotta be some sort of code enforcement issue that's enacted at this time. In the past, we have required it as conditions of approval that, um, that they be, um, put a timeframe on it, you know, that they be forced to do this, um, parking, um, rehabilitation. Um, typically, the owner will ask the tenant to prepare, to pay some of that burden, shoulder some of that burden, they may ask the tenant to do that, but whether the owner has that tenant or not, they have to have a parking. You know, they have to have parking that meets our standards.
I, I think staff knows what to tell the applicant the next time they see them.
I think so, too. Um, so, Kendita, we don't, we don't need to amend the motion to ask for a report on whether the parking lot is, is up to code or not. We could, we just continue till the twenty-sixth, and that's kind of the little sidebar that you guys will-
Right.
We can address the parking then.
Someone will bring that to the meeting in two weeks.
That's correct.
Okay, okay. So, with that, we have the, the continuance till the twenty-sixth?
No, 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 no. Well, September twenty-sixth.
September twenty-sixth. All is in favor?
Aye.
All right. Imposed? Okay, I'll bring it back. And please let the applicant know we'd like him to be here.
He or she.
Thank you, Natalie. He or she, yeah.
Thank you. It does say that once opened, the first location, they will do future locations.
Future locations, yeah. So, good. So, now, we're gonna move on to, um, absences. Does anyone wanna make a motion for Commissioner?
I'll make a motion to excuse Commissioner Gardner.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
When we did our votes, I didn't say that he was not present. Do I need to do that? Okay, I'm good. Okay. I'll remember next time. Okay, I'll remember next time, I promise. Get used to this. Okay, may my staff member comments?
We had two requests from the last meeting, one of them for a list of the planning commission projects that were approved, and that should've been distributed in your packet if any of you didn't receive it. Um, we'll, uh, be happy to get you another copy of it. In addition, you had asked me to, uh, report back to you on the status of the circulation element. Um, we are proceeding with the circulation element. The city is coordinating, um, some of the traffic counts and some of the new, um, Santa Ana mobility and safety, um, information, and so that is being extended into probably twenty-seventeen is when, um, it will be coming to you, probably, um, closer to the middle of the year. Um, so, that is our current update. If you have any, um, other questions for us, let me know.
Thank you for doing this. It's, it's a good report. It's really, I said, "Thank you for the report," which you did.
Certainly.
It's good. Really appreciate it.
Thanks, we're gonna go on to, uh, planning commissioner comments. Commissioner Basara?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanna, uh, hope my colleagues will join me in extending a welcome to our newest member, Ms. Mendoza. Welcome aboard. Other than that, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Alderdy?
Beatrice, welcome to the board, uh, to the commission, and, uh, let's have some fun.
Commissioner Basara? I mean, Bauer?
Welcome aboard, and I welcome Natalie, or, uh, you did a great job, by the way, on that very difficult, uh, permit. Thank you.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
Welcome, Bee, welcome, Natalie, thank you for joining us.
Commissioner McLaughlin? I just wanna thank you guys for welcoming me. Natalie, you did a great job. I wanna, and did all, um, my fellow commissioners, welcome, Bee. It's good to have some diversity on this.
Yeah.
And Natalie, welcome. We, we're breaking you in. Good one to do it with.
I just realized, we've had someone sitting here the whole time. I, of cour- I, um, and she's been listening very patiently to all this, and she helps put our packets together. She is our, um, she has been filling in for us for Karen, um, in the day-to-day operations of the business, so, so that she could better understand it, um, we asked her to, to come tonight. Her name is Mandal O'Connor, and I'd like you to welcome Mandal.
Mandal, welcome.
Welcome.
So good to meet you. First one wasn't good, huh? I, I had a couple of things, I, I don't wanna keep everybody too long, but, um, I, I had reported, um, about a week and a half ago, Yo Sushi. Uh, I hope you guys vaguely remember that we, uh, we approved their ABC license just not long ago, and lo and behold, not soon after they got their ABC, they decided to paint on the wall sake and beer and put alcohol, um, posters in their windows completely in violation of their CUP. At both, at both locations, not just one, not both. So, um, code enforcement did a fabulous job of, of jumping on it, going out there, he's cleaning it all up, it's all closed up.
Kicked Sergio's butt, huh?
I went through the right, like, chain of command. I don't get those privileges. Um, but, but then I'm driving by Northgate on Seventeenth, and lo and behold, they have, um, products outside of their front door. We, another one that we approved an ABC license and specifically had the owner here and said, "You can't have crates of watermelon and Doritos and stacked-up bottles of water outside your, the facility." And so, she was very like, "Yes, yes, yes, whatever you want." Well, they're there, again. I don't, I don't know about the other Northgate that we gave an ABC two license on, Bristol and McFadden, um, I, I'm gonna guess it's probably the same. So, my point is that everybody, and to, to the point of our ones that we had today, is everybody's gonna say, "Yes, yes, yes, I'll do whatever you want, and please, 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 give me the CUP for my ABC." And then they turn around and just kinda, you know, stick their finger at us. So, I, I don't know what the, I don't know what the answer is, and I know that on some that we've been concerned with, we thought that that might happen, we've said, "Oh, let's go, let's, let's review it in six months." And I don't, I, I don't far don't wanna say that to every single ABC application we get, but what can we do so that we're not having this, you know, "I'll tell you what you wanna hear and then turn around and do whatever I want" attitude? I, I don't, I'm, I'm just at a loss for, what do we have to do as an agency? I mean, we've got code enforcement, but we, they've got so much going on and they're so overworked, we don't wanna put additional, uh, you know, on them, but at the same time, it is an enforcement issue. Once it leaves us, that's all we're left with, and I don't know what kind of teeth we need for people to, you know, when we say it, you know, we mean it. And, I mean, is there like, you know, "We're gonna revoke your CUP." Are we gonna like start?
Yeah, we could do that, but that's not cheap.
I mean, I think we need, I think we need to start doing it. I think we should, we should threaten revocation, or we should have a revocation process that if, that if, if it comes back, we put that in motion, because if we don't, then we're just sitting here approving all these, and in particular, it's the CUPs for the ABC, because it's where we have the most, where we have, where we have, I think, the most control, 'cause people, that ABC is, that's important, that's lucrative, nobody wants to lose that. But we need people to understand that we're not gonna sit around and be, um, doormats and let people step on us when we make a decision. I just, I feel that in, in, in the position I'm in, in this body, that we, we're pretty generous, and so when we do that, I think people should be complying, at least, at the least, be compliant.
Madam Chair, if I, if I may just, off your comments, if I might ask staff, just so that we're all on, under the same understanding, what is the process for initiating revocation? In other words, like, could this commission as a body direct staff to bring, you know, an existing CUP before the commission for discussion of revocation?
Yes, you could, or, or one member could. We would schedule it, um, it would then have to be scheduled for a public hearing. Um, what I'm most familiar with is staff, you know, initiates it. When, um, someone sees it, we bring it forward to you, you decide whether or not you're gonna schedule it for public hearing, then, um, you take an action on it, and then it goes to city council typically.
I just, I just wanted all of us to understand it, you know, hear the same thing. And, and my experience with revocations, nine out of ten applications that come to a body for some sort of revocation proceedings usually end up in a, some sort of six-month compromise, you know, kind of a shape up or ship out sort of, uh, situation, and usually things reform, because, as, as you said, Madam Chair, you know, they, they realize, "Hey, this body's kinda serious, they, they really mean business." And so, when they don't get to stay open till 2:00 AM, they're really only open till 10:00 for the next six months, they, they see the hit in their wallets and they start to shape up and, you know, do what's necessary to keep their license. So, I, I don't wanna get us down the path of, "Let's just start revoking like crazy," but at the same time, knowing that it is a tool in our tool belt, and if we exercise it really cautiously, we can achieve what you were speaking about.
What's the step at, right, there, there's the council, but that's not where it ends.
Well, uh, well, first, I'm gonna get the first step, um, we need to confirm that something illegal is happening or something against the conditions, and a letter needs to go out, giving them a chance.
Right. Um, one of the things that we could start doing in direction, um, at your direction, is we could start and, um, mail them a letter that attaches a copy of their CUP that says, "When you see something that, you know, is not in compliance with it," um, what we've been doing basically is just having code enforcement go out there and, um, you know, cite them for not CUP, but, but, um, maybe that would reinforce the fact that they are operating at the pleasure, you know, that, at the pleasure of this, this has been granted to them, it's not something that's given them by right, it's something that, um, has given, been given to them with the understanding that they were gonna comply with the conditions, um, send them a copy of their conditions and, and remind them that if not, you know, we would be coming out to inspect in a certain amount of time, and they needed to get on it. So, if you have, um, issues, we will take care of them. Um, but, yeah, I, I mean, it's, um, other communities, and we have talked about doing this, um, other communities that I've worked with require people to sign, um, the conditional use per, the conditional use permit after it's adopted. So, they come in and, um, they also sign it as well, so that there's no misunderstanding that, "Oh, I didn't understand that, that was part of my conditions." Um, so that's often another tool, and we have discussed, um, instituting that procedure. I think it's a good one, um, because it gives you additional, um, standing when you're in, you know, if you are gonna take someone before, you know, through a revocation process, you, you know, yeah, they agree to it. Um, so that, that may be something we'll look into, and we can report back to you on that process, if that's the direction you'd like us to take, but we can also look at other alternatives to try to put some more teeth into things.
Commissioner Alderdy?
Yeah, so, we were just talking about the process, but I think we stopped short. It goes to the council, then what happens?
Then they have, um, ultimate authority to modify, revoke, or, um-
And then the remedy for the applicant or the, is what? To file a writ?
It depends on if the council revokes.
Right, so then they file a writ, and-
Right.
I mean, I've been involved in these, it, it-
Right.
I think we're making it, it's, we're oversimplifying how complicated this could be. There's peop- there's applicants that make, there are property owners that will operate illegal storage facilities. I think this city had one, other cities have had them, and you stay in the courts, come out of the courts, you make it expensive. So, it's not, it's not just, "We make a recommendation to the council," it, it, it's a legal proceeding, and it can be costly.
Well, you know, I've been through a lot of them, as a matter of fact, and, and, um, as Commissioner Basara said, it's about ninety-five percent of them, um, end up with modification to the CUP's conditions, the conditions become stronger, the applicant agrees to them, there's generally a process where you come back in six months, I mean, ninety-five percent of them, but-
I don't disagree with that, but when we're describing the process, we, we describe five percent of the process. There's more to it, which is the court part, and-
Well, there could be a court part, but that's not, you know, any issue that we, any issue that we approve could end up in court. And that's, I mean, any, anything that you do.
Right, but, but a, a CUP's a vested interest, which is why you might see someone hire an attorney to help them, uh, combat it. I've seen it. I've seen it plenty of times.
Yeah, but that's, but your CUP approving your CUP tonight, and the CUP that, if they didn't like it, they could also contest it.
Sure.
Any, you're right, any, it goes without saying, any action that you do-
No, I don't think it does go without saying, because we're describing the process, and, and that's not the part of the process that you described. You described going to the council, and then somehow miraculously ended, it really doesn't end at that point.
Well-
I'm, I don't know that it's ninety-five or ninety percent, but I, depending on the value of the CUP to the person, will determine how much they're willing to fight. That's all I'm saying. I, I don't think it's, is cut and dry as it ends at the council.
Well, they can't sue unless an action's been taken.
Sure.
So, ultimately, the action is, they either modify the CUP, or they revoke it, and that's, that's, that's the process. Of course anybody can sue it, I mean, there's no argument over that.
No, but that, the process isn't just, you, I mean, it's a writ that you file, and, and it's not as, then, then the city attorney's office gets involved, and then they, they respond. I've seen it, I've seen it plenty of times when it's profitable. So, I, I just wanna make sure we don't think it ends at the council. Oftentimes it does, sometimes it doesn't.
Well, our portion of it does.
So, I, I had a question in terms of how this goes down, practically speaking, code enforcement enforces Northgate, they go out there and they cite them, but, I mean, couldn't we, couldn't they have some mechanism?
The threat is very valuable in itself. Northgate is not going to risk their CUP because putting, they wanna put watermelons out front, they're not gonna do that. So, I mean, the threat is very valuable, so we're not using that threat in a, in a, in a valuable way, as far as I'm, I can see. So, does code enforcement go out there and say, "One violation, two violation, three, we're sending it back to, we're gonna send it to the planning commission, guys, we're real serious now."
They, um, they typically, I mean, that, they typically say, when it's multiple violations, they'll come and talk to us about it, um, and say, "Listen, we've had multiple violations on this, this is an issue." Um, I have not had here at this city multiple violations on any CUP yet, I haven't been here a year, but I haven't, but, um, but typically, in other cities that I've worked with, if it gets to be multiple violations, we're talking about, you know, we're taking it to another level, and they know it. Um, but, you know, um-
Well, the, I, I guess what my comment is, maybe we need to, to educate code enforcement that we're behind them, they can use us in that way, put some teeth into their enforcement mechanism. They go out to Northgate, they tell them maybe the first time, say, "Hey, guys, you're in violation of your CUP, you continue this, we're taking it to the planning commission." I mean, are they, do they know that?
Yeah.
Are they using it in that way? I mean, I want them to have every tool at their disposal, I want those guys to really be effective.
Yeah, let, I'll, I'll talk to them and make sure that that's what they're doing. Uh, I'm not sure that they don't do it, so I'm, I'm-
I doubt.
You know, I know they always write down, "It's in violation of condition, such-and-such CUP," um, but perhaps they're not reinforcing to them that this- to them that this can be revoked.
Well, Madam Chair, if I might ask staff, what, what, in the sense of the banquet facility that was on East 17th Street, when they came before us, the exhaustive process that Commissioner Alderetti was describing, I don't know what leg or what element they were at, but they were definitely on, and Madam City Attorney, they were going to court. Criminal complaint. So, this was not just, you know, waiting to see what the council's going to do, or what we may or may not do. They were going to court. And so, that, some point, though, there was an application coming before us, and the impression I got from that whole situation was, there was a box that needed to be checked by us in order for it to move forward. Could you elaborate on that for us?
On that one, they did not have a CUP, and they had been operating continuously, they had been cited multiple times for not having the CUP. They were in court, they, there had not been an act, they had, they had not been an action, right? Because I was confused on that.
There was an action, but they, um, saying must be.
But, they were, yeah, and so they wanted to do this compliance, and they did that multiple times at the court level. And ultimately, they finally brought it before us, at which point, we recommended denial, just based on the impacts that had occurred to the neighbors. So, and you, and you went ahead, and ultimately, they decided it was better to move out of the city than to try to satisfy the requirements that we were ready to, that we wanted to place on them.
So, they didn't pursue anything beyond that? So, once they realized they weren't going to make any legal headway, they.
They left.
Okay.
Right. They left the city.
They vacated the facility completely.
Mm-hmm. They moved to Garden Grove, I believe, or Westminster.
Nice.
Which is fine with us.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Um, yeah, so that, that was one way it can end, too.
Well, you know, and I don't want to, I don't, you know, if, if 95% of, you know, the ABCs that were given out, or, I mean, the CUPs for ABC, or, you know, everybody's, you know, doing things the legit way, I don't, you know, I don't want, I don't want us to work, you know, extra hard. But I would be interested to know, of the CUPs that we've approved, let's say, in the last year, you know, the CUPs for ABC licenses in the last year, if there's a mechanism to do like a random selection and, and have, you know, like randomly, if we had, if we gave out 100, you know, if we took 10% of that and said, code enforcement, we're going to randomly, we're going to put them all in a bowl and pick 10 of them and go out and check to see if they're meeting the CUP. It would give us idea of, are we, you know, is everybody playing by the right cards? I mean, I don't know if that's the solution, I just, I'm just trying to looking at, like, if we could, you know, I want to cause a, you know, thunderstorm, but I, but just the ones that I've seen, and that I, and that I hear about, it's like, we just gave you an ABC, you're already messing around.
We, we really, I mean, at this point, because of staffing, for both planning and code enforcement, we operate on a response to complaints basis. And that's the staffing level that we have at this point. It's unfortunate, but there's, I can't commit to anything, I can't commit to anything more than that.
We're kind of going beyond commission of comments. Yeah. I know, and I didn't want to, I didn't want to keep everybody, I was just saying.
Bring out the Starbucks, so we go.
We could put this, if you want, it, yeah, if you would like to future agenda this, that would be, we'd be willing to do that, but, but it may be a dead horse at this point.
I'd like to know the, I, I mean, I really would like to know. If it's 90%, bam, that's great. I mean, and sending letters is good, because you're establishing a record when you go after them in the event that you'd have to go after them. I just, I don't know what, I always saw the bad actors. So, it's kind of like being a cop, you think everybody's a perp. That's kind of what I think, you know, sometimes when you see so many bad actors, but it's, you're right, they're getting filtered through the process.
Yeah.
And so, what I see, what I used to see was just the bad actors, not all the good actors.
Yeah. I, you know, I don't, um.
Yeah, reformed.
You know, in this city, I, I do know that we've, you know, they very seldom got, in other cities that I've worked for, it's been a more aggressive, they've been more aggressive. And, and they very seldom went to litigation.
Right. Madam Chair, I would support, if you would want to request that planning staff invite the code enforcement folks to come in and give us just a, a presentation, just to clarify kind of some of the different items that we're discussing here, and let them tell us what their current standard operating procedure is as far as pursuing things with multiple violations. And I think that would really be timely, given some of the applications that we're having coming before us.
We're getting them.
But, just to, you know, I mean, I think, like with any profession, law, medicine, it's always good to have continuing education, and we all learn something new each time. And for us to actually get the, the direct scoop from planning's colleagues as to how they proceed, I think would really help us all deliberate.
Go ahead.
If I may? And maybe perhaps it would work better as a work study, because I'd like.
I was just going to propose a work study session, so if we could do a work study session.
Why don't we have a code enforcement, I thought that's where you're going, actually, a work study session.
I was differentiating Madam Chair, but whatever she'd like to do, yeah.
That would be good.
Work study session, works for me.
Right, I'm not sure we can get it next week, but, at your next meeting, but we'll.
If we didn't, if it doesn't happen for, you know, 30 days, I'm, I, you know.
30 days would be perfect, given who's coming back.
Yeah. Yeah.
Maybe we even start off with a work study session, just a thought.
We'll, uh, we'll see what we can negotiate on that, but, yeah, unless you have any other.
I appreciate it, and, and thank you. I appreciate you guys just, you know, letting me.
When we look at it, when we look at it, can we look at just the, I mean, I think there's still some vagary about where, once it goes beyond code enforcement, what's the next step?
What, what kind of recourse we have?
Yeah, I'd like to understand.
Do you want the whole process laid out?
I think, I think we ought to understand, I mean, unless I'm mistaken, I don't think, you know, Eric is probably the most knowledgeable in this area, and I think you were even asking some questions relative to the outcome and process itself, and how long it will take, and everything else. I mean, I think this, if we know how the whole thing is, you know, put forth, then there may be a way of injecting the planning commission into it, or there may not be. It may, it may be just a legal process that continues on and satisfies, you know, the satisfaction of what comes out of it is, you know, a court, a decision, and things of that nature. We may not have any say in the matter.
I, I would agree. I think, you know, from Commissioner Alderetti's experience, like he says, you know, he deals with the harsher offenders. I, I like Canada, you know, I, I've been blessed in, in different capacities to see those that have cried uncle quicker than others, and, but I think with our combined experience and, and some education from the staff, we can probably benefit from all this.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, what we're going to do is we'll try to put together a work study session that will address code enforcement, the revocation process, and, and we'll also try to put together some ideas of how to make our process of adopting CUPs and, and more, have more teeth to it, okay?
Very good.
All right.
Very good. And with that, we're going to adjourn for the night. Thank you.
You sure?
Yes. I'm positive.
I know, I was just checking the score, it's 0-0.